Okay, item eight. Presentation on amendments to Land Development Code, Article six, Section six, dot, dot 12, signs changing the method of calculating permitted, permanent, and temporary signs for commercial and residential zoning districts.
Mayor, Council? This is a brief introduction and just sort of a quick run-through of what we're proposing as far as changes to our sign codes for a couple of different reasons. One is, sign codes are subject to First Amendment protections of free speech. And last spring, a court, a Supreme Court decision reinforced what had previously been understood by many sign codes, that content-based regulations were not something that's supported under the First Amendment. You can regulate the size and location and pretty much anything else associated with a sign, but not what it says. So as a result of that, many communities have started looking at their sign codes, including us. We started almost immediately after that, looking at how do we get rid of content-based regulations? Those regulations that are tied to what the sign says, rather than where it is, or how big it is, or what color it is. One of the first things we decided in making those changes is to also look at the basic concept of our sign code, and see if there's a better approach to take that might be easier to understand, simpler, both for us, for the businesses, for the sign companies, and easier to enforce when that becomes necessary at some point in the future. So the simpler the sign code, the better it is. So one of the things we looked at right away were example codes from other jurisdictions. We looked at recommended codes from both the sign industry, and the American Planning Association, and the American Bar Association. We found some good examples that we used to pull bits and pieces together and create a sign ordinance that addresses the Supreme Court rulings and also makes our process simpler. We then went straight into our review process with the Unified Development Code Committee. This is a committee that we run concepts by before we make changes to our land development code and zoning regulations. That committee met several times to talk about that. The committee members were ultimately in favor, recommended that we move this concept on to our planning commission for their review. Our planning commission then subsequently did the same thing. They reviewed it, they talked to us about it, they asked questions, and ultimately they made a recommendation that we bring it to you for possibility of adoption and replacement of certain sections of our current sign code. So one of the first things that you need to know about our current sign code is that it's somewhat complex. So the sign code, sign code is a series of tables, and each of these little boxes is a separate type of sign, or a sign for a separate purpose with a different set of regulations for each one. So if you want to put up a political sign in your yard, the current regulations give you a certain size and placement and timing criteria. If you want to put a yard sale sign, the same size, in the same spot in your yard, the regulations are different. One of the reasons they were different is that they're based on the content of the sign, what it says, rather than how big it is, where it's placed, et cetera. So by pulling those things out of the code, and focusing again on the size of the sign, and its placement and location, we attempted, and I think we accomplished, simplifying the code significantly. We looked at the different types of signs for different reasons. Freestanding signs generally are intended to be read from the road or from off of the property. So if you control the size of a freestanding sign based on how fast the posted speed limit is on the adjacent road, there's a logic to that. Faster the speed, the further away you need to be, the further away you are to read the sign. The larger the sign needs to be for you to read it, and that size comes down as the speed limit comes down. So our proposal, and again, I'm not going to go into the specifics unless you have questions about the specifics. You have those in your staff report, in the attachments to the staff report. We reduce the size of the sign for slow-speed zones, we increase the size of the sign for faster-speed zones. Again, gives the driver time to identify the property, make a decision before abruptly having to attempt to make a turn into a property or something like that. Generally speaking, the sign on the wall of the building is intended to be read by people who are already on the property. They're in the parking lot, they've walked onto the property from the sidewalk, they're looking at that sign based on how far away the building is from the property line, from where they first enter the property. So again, what we propose is you look at the size of the sign based on how far the building is from the property lines. If it's a big building further back, you get a big sign. If it's a small building further back, you get a medium-sized sign. If it's a big or small building right at the property line, you get a relatively small sign, because you don't need a larger sign to read it from the property line. That distance is a key part of this process. And that concept was taken both from the American Planning Association and the American Bar Association recommended sign codes.
We got one question.
Certainly.
George, not to overcomplicate a complicated issue here, but what if the change of speed limit, what if the speed limit changes on that road?
It does. They rarely change. Typically, we know in advance if they do.
Willow Creek used to be 30 miles an hour.
And it changed, it changed after the adoption of our current sign code, and it affected us, because we have a highway commercial designation in the current code that did not apply to businesses that were there before the speed limit went up, and that are now subject to that allowance, which will let them have a larger sign. It's possible that that can happen. It doesn't usually happen with existing roadways without some significant changes to those roadways, as in Willow Creek Road.
Let me just interject here. Because this, this sign code is a function of zoning. So in that example, if the speed limit were to go up for some reason, the road gets widened, I mean, speed limits are obviously tied to the nature of the road, or the street. So if the speed limit goes up, and it pushes that sign into a larger category, that property owner would have the right at its expense to, or the business, to put the bigger sign in. If the converse happens, where the speed limit for some reason goes down, then those signs are basically grandfathered in for, because they're legal non-conforming uses at that point. So again, I don't, I think it's fair to say that speed limits don't fluctuate very often. I'm looking over at Ian, he's nodding his head. So, I mean, I think it's going to be a rare instance if that does occur, but again, if the speed limit goes up, and it pushes that, that sign into a larger, larger size, property owner or business could, by right, put the bigger sign in. Goes the other way, they can still maintain that larger sign. So there is a possibility of having some legal non-conforming uses, but I think it's probably rare, if at all, that would occur.
So we were also looking at temporary signs. Those signs that are up for limited periods of time, or for limited purposes. They would include things like political signs, or yard sale signs, or special event banners, those types of signs. Again, the idea is to regulate the sign because of its temporary nature, not by what it says. We looked at controlling temporary signs on commercial property by both the size of the sign, and the time that those signs are allowed to be up. Again, the reasoning there is to address clutter issues that happen if you put up a bunch of temporary signs, and you leave them up long-term or permanently. Sometimes you have situations where one business can put up a temporary sign that blocks the next business, so having some limited time period made sense there. For residential properties, we backed off just slightly from that. It's primarily related to the size of the signs, rather than how long they can be up. One of the concerns that has been expressed throughout most of the court cases in history relating to First Amendment rights is limiting someone's ability to express a political position, or to express a particular position from, from themselves to their neighbors or their property owners nearby. Putting a limitation on, for instance, political signage, you can't put it up until 60 days before an election, is an inhibition on, it's, it's an inhibition on free speech. You're not allowed to put up a sign that says, "I hate Congress." You can't put a sign up that says, you know, "I'm in favor of amending the Constitution" for whatever reason, until you, right before the election. So you're putting a limitation on a freedom that has been, over the past several, well, at least the past hundred years or so, protected through decisions by the Supreme Court, interpretations by the Supreme Court, that says, "That's a freedom that's covered under the First Amendment." So we put a maximum size to avoid a clutter issue, but not necessarily how long those signs could be up. So someone could put up a temporary sign for other reasons. We also don't control the content. Again, we do not have a separate political sign versus a separate yard sale sign. If a property owner in a residential property wanted to put up a sign that said, "Eat at Arby's," he could do that. It would be considered a temporary sign, it would be subject to these circumstances. There are some other controls that come into effect. Arby's can't put up a sign on a residential property that says, "Eat at Arby's," because that's an off-site sign. That's controlled by a separate set of regulations that remain in place in our code. You advertise for business purposes what you do on-site. You don't advertise somewhere else. So one of the reasons that we looked at all of these processes is to try to limit the total number of regulations that apply to signs, and to make it as simple as possible, both again, for us, also for the public, the businesses in town, and for the sign companies in town, to be able to understand what they can do and how they can do it. As part of this review and approval process, we had several sign companies participate, give us ideas or comments on it. We anticipate asking them once again to come and be available to talk to you when you have this on an agenda for an action, so that you can hear from them as well. One of the basic concepts that, that we started from was that we want to be as inclusive as possible. We don't want to create sign codes or regulations that they don't understand from a sign company perspective, that we can't enforce, or that generally businesses aren't going to understand, and it causes confusion. We're trying to reduce that confusion down, and again, as you saw from the table I put up, that was one of three tables in our sign ordinance on how to regulate signs currently in place. So the idea again, was to make it as simple as possible.
Okay, we got a couple of questions. Councilwoman Wilcox?
George, on the temporary commercial signs, I've noticed numerous areas around Prescott where there are iron stakes, fence post stakes, with a temporary banner advertising an event. It's on commercial property, but the stakes always seem to be there, and the copy changes, or the banner changes. Is a permit required every time the copy changes?
It currently is not. They're permitted for a period of time. Under the proposal with, under this proposal, the answer would be yes. You would need to pull a permit for a temporary commercial sign, just like you would pull a permit for a permanent commercial sign. That's for several reasons. One, if we put time limits on it, and size limits on it, we need to be able to address those. With commercial signage, it's something that's usually in a much more visible public place, so we want to be able to verify quickly that they're in compliance. A little different than residential property, where it's not generally on main public roadways, and not generally going to cause a safety or aesthetic issue.
So if I understand you correctly, every time the copy changes, under this proposal before us, they would need a permit?
You would pull a separate permit, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Each change is a separate sign.
Each change.
Mayor Prodom?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended those meetings, you know?
Yes, sir.
One thing that was never really verified to me, while we don't take the liberty to obstruct somebody's freedom of speech, we don't also, or we also don't take the liberty of allowing distracted driving. I mean, you can't just put a sign up that would create a distracted driver's sort of a thing. So in perspective, we do somewhat regulate content, because there's certain things that would distract driving, regardless of how big or small a placement of a sign that you put. So you might want to touch on that just a little bit, because there is some regulatory mechanism in place to assure, especially on public streets, you can't just put whatever you choose to put under the freedom of speech.
Right. And that's a very good point, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we went into that in detail, at length, when they were talking about them blinking lights and all that other stuff.
Blinking, flashing, moving, signs that emulate, traffic control signs, for instance. Those are the types of things that are controlled. Under the Supreme Court's series of decisions, there are three basic concepts or aspects of signage that generally you can regulate. You can regulate the time, either the time it goes up and the time it comes down, or the amount of time it can stay on property. You can regulate the place you put it, so that you don't have it obstructing drivers' vision, or you don't have one sign on one property block the sign on the adjacent property. And you can regulate the manner that the, the speech is done, the manner of the sign placement. And manner is generally the section that would fall under the issues that Councilman Lamerson pointed out. One of the things you can't do is the flashlights that will cause vehicle drivers to look away from the roadway for a longer period of time than it takes to read a sign, which is literally one or two seconds for the most part. If it's something that attracts attention and keeps attention, now it's a hazard. And those are the things that we do regulate. Changeable copy signs, those video-type signs that are popular in other parts of Arizona and in places like Las Vegas, are a distraction to drivers. There are significant concerns about having someone watch a video of something occur while they should be driving. That, that happens a lot with those types of signs. If your sign can show a fire truck driving past, back and forth on the sign, you will do that eventually to try to attract attention. And when you do that, drivers will watch the fire truck drive back and forth, and drive over somebody else. So the concept is, signs visible for a certain period of time, you don't create a situation where you attract a driver, or pedestrian, or bicyclist's visibility for a longer period of time, when that is in fact going to cause a safety issue. So thank you for bringing that up. That time, place, and manner are an important part of this process, and manner is how we control that.
Councilman Jessica?
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate your, or your effort to simplify this whole situation, thank you very much.
You pulled a permit for signs from us, haven't you?
Yes, we have. And the question I have is, it says here, changing the method of calculating the permitted, permanent, and temporary signs, is that what we're talking about, is changing the method of calculating?
It, it's changing both the method and the impetus for calculating. So we're looking at, again, freestanding signs, it's the speed limit, it's traffic visibility of those signs. So the calculation's based on how fast this posted speed limit is, rather than our current calculations, which are related to the size of the building. So we are changing how we calculate those signs.
Okay.
Speed limit means bigger sign, as opposed to just simply the size of the building, means bigger sign.
Okay. Well, I guess the question I had, in the, the material that I've gotten here, it shows sign code amendments, and when I press on sign code amendments, it goes to the sign code. And there is no cross-outs as far as what was, you know, what, what it was before versus what it is now. It's just the sign code. And so, is this whole thing the amendment, or am I, am I missing something?
We will get you a copy of this with the strike-throughs and underlines. It's very difficult to read, so we didn't do that.
Okay.
This time around. The issues specifically that were addressed relate to, I zoomed in a little too far here. When you get to the section that talks about freestanding signs, you should see a list of speed limits and ranges. That's the new proposal.
Okay.
Again, the current proposal looks like this, or the current sign ordinance looks like this. And this is page one of three of these charts. So we've shortened it down to this type of an approach, based on the speed limits. So if you have a speed limit of up to 25 miles per hour on the street in front of you, then you would get 24 square feet of sign, which is our current basic square footage allowance for an individual business now. So we're not reducing signs overall. Generally, they're going to be the same size they're allowed now, or slightly larger, depending on speed limits.
So I want the maximum speed on the road outside of my business?
That depends. Depends on whether you want your customers coming back or not.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. This is an introduction, we're going to be back to you with item four and action agenda at some point in the future. If you should have any questions for us, please let us know, and we will get you the answers.
Councilwoman Zell?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, George, I just wanted to say, good job, you've taken all the recommendations, and went to the P&amp;Z, and I don't see any more vines or weeds on there, and things that were not necessary before, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one thing for you, George. You talked in here about moving light signs, I can't find it right now. Can I go back to definition? Doesn't really explain what that is. You do have one called illuminate sign, but it just says, "A sign whose service is lighted internally or externally." You might want to put something in here, unless I've missed it, what a moving light sign is.
So under the definitions, you're saying, okay. We have an explanation, a limited explanation, under a list of prohibited signs, it's just before that, but there's no actual definition, you're right.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions, comments from the council? Okay, next item, please.
Item B, roundabout presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. To begin the presentation, I'm actually gonna, we're gonna watch a roundabout video, if you could entertain that for me, and then I'll follow that up with a presentation, kind of touching on some of the key things that we're going to hear here, and we'll go from there. Assuming we have volume.
And stop-controlled intersections. How much time do you spend stopped at a red light, waiting for the light to change, when there was no traffic on the cross street? Did you know there was an intersection alternative that is substantially safer than signalized and stop-controlled intersections, and much more efficient? The US DOT's Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, has identified modern roundabout intersections as one of nine proven lifesaving roadway safety strategies. Modern roundabouts are not only safer than traditional signalized and stop-controlled intersections, where appropriate and properly designed, roundabouts operate more efficiently, often have lower lifecycle costs, and result in increased fuel efficiency. So, what is a roundabout? A roundabout is a circular intersection. Traffic flows counterclockwise around a center island. Entering traffic yields to circulating traffic in the roundabout. Channelized approaches using splitter islands deflect traffic as it enters the intersection, slowing speeds. While the vast majority of roundabouts are single-lane, one-quarter of the roundabouts in the US have two lanes, which also provide safety benefits. Roundabouts with up to three lanes have been successfully built. Many roundabouts can be used in low-speed urban environments in lieu of a stop sign or traffic signal. Roundabouts are different from other types of circular intersections that you might have seen. They are not rotaries, or the older traffic circles, which are still common in the northeastern United States, which typically have higher speeds in approaches, and usually higher speeds within the circle. They may use stop or signal control, or they may require circulating traffic to yield to entering traffic. A roundabout is also not the same thing as a neighborhood traffic circle, typically used on local streets for speed control. Roundabouts have several distinguishing characteristics and benefits, setting them apart from other intersection types. Traffic can move freely through roundabouts. This makes them more efficient than signalized or stop-controlled intersections. Unlike other types of intersections, roundabouts are designed to slow the speed of vehicles entering by deflecting them from a straight-line path into the roundabout. Drivers approaching the roundabout have time to judge for gaps in the circulating traffic, and either yield or adjust their speed before entering the intersection. This allows for safer entries into circulating traffic. In addition to channelized approaches, signs and pavement markings on the roadway guide drivers to make sure they take the proper entry path. Roundabout intersections can require additional space compared to a traditional intersection, but they may be constructed within the existing right of way. Roundabouts eliminate dangerous left turns across opposing traffic lanes, and virtually eliminate high-speed right angle and head-on crashes. While initial construction costs can be higher with roundabouts, they often have lower operating and maintenance costs than signalized intersections. They can have ongoing costs for lighting and maintaining the landscaping, but unlike a signalized intersection, there is no signal equipment to install, power, and maintain. Roundabouts have a longer service life than traditional intersections, resulting in better economic value over the long term, especially when you factor in the reduction of fatal and injury crashes. Roundabouts are also the greenest intersection alternative, and not only because of their aesthetic appeal. Reduced vehicle idling means fewer emissions and less wasted fuel. Less acceleration and fewer sudden hard stops means quieter, more peaceful transportation through communities. Landscaping in the central island, splitter islands, and along the approaches can further benefit and enhance community livability. With all of these benefits, why aren't all transportation agencies building modern roundabout intersections? One of the biggest reasons transportation agencies overlook this proven intersection safety solution is out of concern that the public just won't accept them. Trying one roundabout is usually all it takes to convince even the biggest skeptic of their benefits.
In the 12 years the department has been building roundabouts, we've had our share of skeptics. But what we've found is after the roundabout is built, the skeptics become supportive of the idea, which is attributed to the time savings and the safety benefits that a roundabout offers.
as an intersection alternative. Numerous states like Washington, and cities across the country like Carmel, Indiana, have embraced roundabouts and support their development. Washington State now has more than 150 roundabouts, and the city of Carmel, Indiana alone has more than 50 roundabouts, with many more planned.
We were one of the first communities in the Midwest to build roundabouts, and make the determination that they work better than stoplights in many, many cases.
A common concern for people that have not experienced driving through a properly-designed roundabout is that they won't be able to get used to the new traffic pattern. But studies consistently show just the opposite. The public overwhelmingly supports roundabouts after they are constructed. Older Americans in particular are supportive of roundabouts.
By 2025, a quarter of all drivers in the United States will be over the age of 65. Intersections are the single most dangerous traffic environment for drivers of any age, with left-hand turns being the single most dangerous traffic maneuver that any of us can make. Forty percent of all crashes that involve drivers over the age of 65 occur at intersections. This is nearly twice the rate of experienced younger drivers. AARP would like to see more roundabouts constructed because of the many safety benefits that they present for drivers of all ages.
As with all new traffic treatments, thorough public education, effective signing, and pavement markings are key to educating all drivers on new traffic patterns. So, are roundabouts safe for other road users? In general, pedestrians face far less risk at roundabouts than traditional intersections, primarily because of the slower speeds and the elimination of turns across the pedestrian crosswalks. Splitter islands both shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians, and allow them to cross one direction of traffic at a time. All of this adds up to increased safety. There is ongoing research to determine the most effective strategies for making roundabouts accessible for visually impaired pedestrians. The US Access Board has been active in the development of design guidelines for roundabouts. The National Cooperative Highway Research Program, NCHRP, is also researching a range of geometric designs, traffic control devices, and other treatments to make roundabouts more accessible to pedestrians with vision impairments. Bicyclists can dismount and use the pedestrian crosswalk, or experienced bicyclists can ride through the roundabout. What about trucks and other large vehicles? Are they able to navigate through roundabouts? Roundabouts can be built to accommodate the turning radius of large trucks and trailers, just like any other intersection. Roundabouts generally have truck aprons, a slightly raised area around the inner circle that provide trucks, buses, and other large vehicles additional room to navigate the roundabout. So what do emergency service providers think about roundabouts? Emergency service providers are able to navigate through roundabouts with their largest vehicles. In emergency situations, roundabouts can be safer and more efficient for an emergency vehicle than traditional intersections. vehicle than traditional intersections. Roundabouts can work very well on a wide range of road types, including freeway interchanges, urban and suburban corridors, and high-speed rural roadways. Some people think they can't be constructed on state roads, but that's just not true. There are numerous examples of successful roundabouts built on state roads, and the number is growing rapidly. The importance of proper design cannot be overstated. Good design is critical to the success of a roundabout. Other keys to success include public involvement and stakeholder support. FHWA offers numerous resources, including a one-day informational workshop for state and local transportation agencies. To learn more, visit the FHWA safety website.
Thanks for entertaining me with that. I know it's a little long, but I think it has some useful information and some of the people, maybe new for a lot of us. So, just as a follow-up to the video, I'd like to just give a brief overview of some of the more important points that we heard. I'd like to also touch on some of the city's upcoming roundabouts, specifically the side-road connector, the Fippen Museum, the roundabout there, as we've all been talking about for some time here. So, modern roundabouts are an effective tool for improving safety, as you heard in the video, in moving traffic through an intersection. Primarily, this is accomplished through slow entry speeds, appropriate laneage and lane assignments, smooth channelization, a design that meets the needs of bikes and pedestrians, adequate accommodation for the design vehicle, including large trucks. I know that that comes up often. We often get comments regarding whether or not large vehicles, RVs and trucks, can really work with roundabouts. We've gone from designs in the past that maybe made trucks take both lanes to the new designs that we're using and the state is using in this area where the trucks stay in lane, and only the largest oversized vehicles need to use the truck apron. And then finally, appropriate sight distance and visibility. As with any device, there's, every location is not appropriate for a roundabout, and so one of the most important things we look at is the location, sight distance, and visibility. So to review, a modern roundabout has the following distinguishing characteristics. It channelizes the approaches, and it basically uses lateral movement of the vehicles to slow the vehicle on approach into the intersection. You yield on entry, counterclockwise circulation of all vehicles around the center island, and appropriate geometric curvature throughout so that those speeds are maintained in and out of the roundabout. It's important to remember, as the video stated, that roundabouts are not other circulating intersection types like rotaries. Yeah, I originally, I've been in Long Beach, California. They have large traffic circles with numerous, numerous lanes, so a lot of people have an experience with some of those. These are different than those things, and they are controlled differently.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
From Councilman Wilcox.
I have a couple of questions, Ian. One is, if we have bike lanes on the side of the roads that are approaching the roundabout, will those bike lanes continue through the roundabout, or how do you deal with the guidance to the bicyclist?
So traditionally, bike lanes do not continue through the roundabout.
Okay.
And you can handle that in one way. You can either become a pedestrian, as a bicyclist, you can either become a pedestrian, and basically, most places will have the bike lane end, and then they'll provide a ramp up onto the sidewalk so that they can take that choice, or they will remain in the roadway, become a vehicle, yield just like any other motor vehicle, and then continue through the roundabout, making the proper lane choice and movement off. And then those bike lanes are then resumed on the exiting lanes, so you then pick it up again. But you can also dismount, walk through, or if, in the case of some roundabouts on high-speed rural roads, larger roads, they'll have a multi-use path, which would allow the bike to continue protected on the pathway.
Right, okay. And the second is more of a comment. I think Chino Valley has done a wonderful job of putting in public art in these roundabouts, and you see them from a long ways off, so you know you're coming to something in the middle of the road. And I think it would be an entirely appropriate use of the Streets Fund to fund public art in those roundabouts. I see Cindy sitting in the audience, right Cindy?
Well, unfortunately, I believe the Abbeville County...
Oh, the side-road connector? Oh, well, there will be other roundabouts.
Yes.
Or maybe we could work something out with the Abbeville County.
Yes.
There are intergovernmental agreements.
Yeah, here in just a few slides, we're gonna talk about some of our projects, and so we'll talk about a couple of those key roundabouts.
Okay.
That's kind of an important part of this.
Real quick, talking about not only the presentation, but the need for the presentation, which is the Fippen Roundabout. From my standpoint, understanding how that functions coming in on a state highway, when you look at going from a five-lane section down to now a two-lane section, the majority of the reason for it being put in is public safety, which means slowing speeds down before you get into Granite Dells. So we already have one on the south side, which is at Willow Lake Road, coming north that does a very good job of taking that five-lane section and then turning it into the roundabout to where it then comes out as a two-lane section, all the way through the Dells, and then it'll go back through the roundabout, picking up traffic that comes off, whether it's the Trailhead or whether it be Walden Ranch, and then the speeds go back up to your 55, 65 mile an hour. So from my standpoint, it's more public safety and slowing traffic because there's a major road infrastructure change, and I think that's probably one of the points that people miss, is that we're changing the road configuration in a big way when we go through the Granite Dells area.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Councilman Jessica.
Yeah, Ian, thank you for your presentation. I'm a firm believer in roundabouts, but one of the situations that we're running into now and that I run into is that I'll go through roundabouts in Prescott Lakes, and, you know, you just kind of go in, you go out, you never see anybody in the roundabout, and you just go about your business. And then the new roundabout at the Deepwell Ranch Road, right there, going into the airport, there's people coming from every different direction in that situation, and certainly in the morning, when people are coming in from Chino, how do you educate people that no, you're not just gonna go right through the roundabout, you're gonna have to stop and yield, and you may have to wait there for a while.
Sure.
And I've seen people get frustrated, and all of a sudden, they'll gun it to try and get on going north onto the highway. How do we alleviate that situation? Because it may be a slow-speed accident, but it's an accident waiting to happen if we don't do something.
Yeah, I think you're, I think the key is education. I mean, roundabouts have been around for quite a while, but, you know, around here, they really haven't been a common use until, you know, maybe 10 years ago that we've started getting some of these. I think there are opportunities from the city or from CYMPO to work as a group. We've looked at some educational things with video series, possible mailers, things like that. I think it's certainly an important thing to get out there, and I think education could be done so that we do let people know, you know, you're gonna, what to expect in a roundabout. I think a lot of people, this video, which is pretty short, it's probably some new things for a lot of people who are driving around Prescott, using roundabouts every day. Another thing is, I think that as it becomes a more common use, I think the driver's guides and some of those booklets where we're getting new drivers or you're going in for refreshing, we need to be educating our new drivers on these types of things. But realistically, if you drive on the road and follow the signing and the, just follow general common sense driving things, you'll navigate a roundabout pretty good. But it's education, and certainly, we can do our part too, and Public Works can look into some of those things. Utility billings has been on my mind for a long time because we use that, we have a big reach in the city of Prescott with mailers in the utility bills, and so we've been contemplating developing a couple traffic-related flyers that would go out with the utility bills to give them the basics of some of these things.
Well, I think just from the standpoint of warning the public that you're not just gonna be able to blow into this roundabout and do what you want to do, because there's a lot of traffic that wants to get through the roundabout that you're gonna have to yield to. And, you know, don't get impatient, you know, that kind of thing. I know we're not the nanny state. I mean, we can't keep everybody from harm every, all the time, but, you know, certainly it's gonna prevent, you know, a situation at those busy roundabouts.
Sure.
Councilman Oner.
Yeah, I see, Steve, I see this a lot at Smoke Tree and Solstice and Northridge, because people think Smoke Tree's a busy fairway, so they just feel they have the right-of-way, even when they come into, and I try to get on my neighborhood, and sometimes it's difficult. So I know exactly what you're saying, but I think your idea of doing, just like we have for water conservation, that we do something in our mailers, this also should be posted on our website. I think this would be a nice piece to put up.
Yeah, we can follow with that as well.
Just link it. It'd be pretty easy to do.
I think one other thing you're bringing up is that a lot of these communities, like Prescott Lakes, you know, they were really proactive and they worked with the city. They wanted to plan a community that had intersection controls in place before some of their streets were really fully built out. Like Solstice has been planned for a long time, but the houses weren't there.
That's right. That's a good point.
And so, you know, we have to remember with roundabouts, they should still, they should be put in when it's time to control an intersection. So, when you go through these ones that have no traffic all the time, they might not have needed to be there specifically. Now, it was good planning on their part to put them in, but I think what you're gonna see is more and more put in when they're needed or when there will be some traffic. But, you know, the one on Prescott Lakes by the jail facility, that was placed for a regional purpose, and so that's why we can, we added additional signing up the hill with a flasher saying, you know, there's a roundabout ahead. We can look at things that are specific to those roundabouts that don't have a lot of traffic as well. So maybe there's engineering solutions, education solutions.
Well, I think the other thing that was pointed out consistently is it has to be properly engineered. And I keep hearing people talk about the size of it, that it needs to be wide, it needs to be large, and so some of the smaller ones are harder when you have a lot of traffic coming in.
They are. And so, continuing on, just to talk about the traffic safety, which is a huge benefit of roundabouts, there's numerous studies. It was kind of quoted in there, but one of the most recent and most well-known is that total crashes are typically reduced by 35%. Injury crashes and severe injuries are reduced by 76%. And then fatalities, one study showed 90%, one showed 100%. But basically, it all comes down to you're removing the amount of conflict points. When you come into a roundabout, you deal with pedestrians before you get to the yield line, so you worry about pedestrians there. Once you're up at the line, you really only have to look left and just move into traffic. So you've only got about eight conflict points as opposed to 16 to 32, depending on the amount of movements at a regular intersection. So that's where the safety benefits come from. As far as operation goes, the operational enhancement is that vehicles are able to yield. They're just not sitting there idling. That's in contrast to stop control and signal control, when you may stop Willow Creek Road numerous, numerous cars for one or two cars coming out of a side street. And if that was a roundabout, that car would just come, yield, and then move onto the traffic stream and then drive away. That results in a reduced overall delay, and if you think about it, it extends the life of a roundabout. So if you compare them to a traffic signal, a traffic signal intersection to a roundabout, you typically can get about 30% more capacity before that will fail. So whereas you might get, let's say, a new signal on Willow Creek Road might last until 2025 before it begins to fail, which means heavy, heavy delay, you might be able to go 30% longer in the life of that roundabout before you need to add additional lanes or anything like that. They can be used to provide traffic calming. By their nature, they slow you down when you go through, so, especially in neighborhoods and things like that, but out on 89, they will slow traffic before you enter north or south of that Dells. We heard some of the pedestrian safety stuff. There is, you know, that video tells it like it is. They're good for pedestrians, but there are challenges because they don't stop the vehicle, and that's difficult for people who are hearing impaired. So they're working on that, and they're coming up with innovative solutions for that. Where we're using them primarily are on our large arterial roads in the rural areas. So for us, it's not that big of an issue, but if they started to move into more of our urban centers, we need to, you know, spend some time on that. And then, ongoing operation and maintenance. You know, I'm gonna have a slide here in a minute on cost, because sometimes they are more expensive, but overall, given all things, you don't have to upgrade and worry about the traffic signal equipment. They typically have less pavement surfaces when you look at left-turn pockets, right-turn D cell lanes on a large intersection. So they typically are lower to operate. They are environmentally friendly, they look good, they usually are quieter, and they're better for the user because they are more fuel efficient. You don't wait as long. You can use them for access management. We've seen that with ADOT. ADOT, in their widening through, by Ruger Road and the future widening from 89A up to our new Deepwell, they're gonna remove some lefts in that area that are problematic at Ruger, but they've moved those movements somewhere else, and then they've introduced roundabouts that are closely spaced so that people can do U-turn movements and then turn right. So you can use that as a tool to make improvements. And then finally, and we mentioned this, aesthetics. They provide great opportunity to landscape, provide art, monumentation, and so they're a great way to beautify if a community decides to do that. There's no requirement to do that, you know, we can go in there and put in DG and it's low maintenance, or if you have a partnership.
That's right.
You can use it as an entryway to your city. So there's a lot of options. Landscaping also serves a double purpose. The lighting and landscaping focuses driver attention to key conflict areas. Typically, the roundabout experts don't like you to be able to see all the traffic in it. That promotes slower speeds, so you only see cars when they come around, and you need to make that decision. And it discourages pedestrians and others from walking in areas where they might get in trouble, so you can channelize them to the locations where they're expected. So there's, we know that there's motorists who do not accept these, but studies have shown that they enhance driver safety. They allow more time to make decisions, they reduce the number of collision points, and they reduce the need to judge gaps where traffic is moving fast. So if we had an intersection where you could turn left across a 55 mile an hour road, your decisions and your things are a lot more important than if you're just looking to yield to a 15 mile an hour circulating vehicle. And so, those things are proven. And then emergency vehicles, they obviously accommodate that, you know, with all things emergency vehicles, they can drive the wrong way, they can mount anything they want, and they can get through. Motorists should be educated, again, education, to exit the roundabout when they're in there or not enter before an emergency vehicle comes. Now, most of ours are two-lane, so if they pulled over, it wouldn't be an issue, they could go right by. So, I think a few more slides. A modern roundabout should be considered anywhere a traffic signal or stop control is under consideration. They have advantages, but there's other locations where they can't put in. In '06 or '07, we did a roundabout feasibility study, the city did that, for seven locations. Of those, the one on Prescott Lakes was one, Granite Dells Estates Interchange was another, side-road connector, the 89, the Fippen Roundabout was another. We had a few that were related to things that haven't happened yet. But one was at the top of Prescott Lakes at Blooming Hills.
Not a good spot.
And it couldn't be built because there wasn't an adequate sight distance. So it was immediately eliminated because it wasn't a good fit. So that's how we consider them. The general engineering standards, which we recently adopted, now are on the website, they actually contain a section on the process for, I'll say, roundabout consideration. It's really traffic control device selection. So it walks an engineer who's doing a development, what they need to look at, and the cost-benefit analysis, capacity, and those things, when comparing stop control to signalization to roundabouts. And so, we, like other state agencies, have implemented that. It doesn't mean we're gonna get all roundabouts, it means they need to be looked at with all the other choices. Some common site applications, intersections with high delay, rural intersections, high-speed rural highways have been specifically, you know, identified as a place where they can significantly reduce crashes. You can use them in new residential subdivisions, corridors. Councilman Blair mentioned that in locations where you want to, or you have limited right-of-way, they can be used as pairs to provide the entering traffic a way to enter, because we don't have platooning-like signals, so it basically funnels out the traffic in a more uniform pattern, and then you don't have the need to... then you don't have the need to widen as soon, and these narrow roadways or corridors can be extended. That would be like our Dells. So we can funnel the traffic in both ways and then maintain that life as long as possible. And then again, gateway treatments. So construction costs, try to be quick on this, they vary. And they can be more expensive because right-of-way typically is greater than a signal. But to really compare them apples to apples, you need to do a benefit cost analysis so that you can consider the safety benefits and some of the capacity benefits. And they often have a longer life between a need to upgrade, like additional left turn, pockets, things like that. So finally, so let's talk about, I think I have two slides on this. I just want to mention the one that we've all been talking about for some time, the Side Road Connector Roundabout. It's basically our SR-89 widening project. So the impetus for the improvement, while it seems to have been focused on the roundabout, is not really the roundabout. This doesn't show the extent of the project, but the project starts from 89A and goes about a mile south all the way to near the curve north of Three Sisters. And so the project is approximately $3.5 million. It's for a five-lane widening of the highway. And that will provide the last section of widening in conjunction with what was done from Chino to Deepwell. And then ADOT is going to do from Deepwell to 89A. So that will be the city's section of the widening of 89 all the way to Chino. So that's the project. Now, within the project, there's this intersection. Now, this intersection, well, I'll just go over what this project entails. It entails the five-lane widening for one mile. It has the bonus of providing a new constellation trailhead parking lot that's moved from the temporary one on the east side to the west. It has improved trail connections under the highway with a new box and pathway. It has utility and drainage improvements. There's a new five-lane Side Road Connector road, and you can see that, I mean, coming over to the east or the right of the screen, and it ends at the limits of the project. But that road is a regional road identified for future connection through CYMPO in our 2040 plan. And so while it will serve to improve access to Fippen, and while it will help Walden, who will be obligated to build the road extending east, they're obligated to build that to three lanes. They're paying for all of that. We, the city will at some point upgrade that to a five-lane road, and that continues, sorry for the scale of the map. But this is an excerpt. And if you look at the arrows pointing down, it goes to M. So that is the Side Road Connector roadway identified as part of our regional, the cities and the areas, regional recommended roadway network. And that basically provides us another east-west, and it's basically a reliever route for 89A. It connects Granite Dells Estates and the interchange we have there, and then it moves on and continues further east. So while we talk about that intersection having all these great benefits of safety and some of the other things, the real reason for that intersection is that. It's because that's a regional connection that we are planning for, just like the one on Prescott Lakes by the jail. While it serves the jail, it's going to, it's going to connect the R, which is at the bottom of the page, that R, that's a future roadway as well. So I just wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit. And I think the roundabout cost is somewhere in the range of 800, $800,000 to $1 million of that $3.5 million project. So.
Thank you. Ian, just a quick question. The price tag is our contribution to a much larger project, correct?
So that section of 89 is the city's roadway.
Right.
That is our project. So the 3.5 provides for the construction of our one-mile widening of that section. Now, ADOT has built the Chino connection down to Deepwell. I think that was 15 million.
Right.
And then they have currently at about 60 to 90% designed the next section through the airport. That's another 10 million. That's all on ADOT.
Right. So this is our small contribution to a larger picture.
Yeah, it would be.
Between state, county, and us.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ian, one question. There's still a significant amount of land in between the end of the Walden Ranch boundary and beginning of Granite Dells Estates. Who's going to pay for that?
Yeah, absolutely. These are great questions. So that's everyone's question is, obviously, you know, we can move this new roadway, Side Road Connector, because it will be built over towards the creek. But the question is, how do we get across the creek? How, who funds that? Well, as private development comes, we, Public Works would certainly expect that private development would pay for some of these connections. But what I will say is that it doesn't take away, just because we don't have the funding source or we don't know where that funding is going to come from, we still plan for these regional connections. Sundog Connector, the one that goes from PV to Prescott Lakes by there, that's, we did a study, that road is anywhere from 30 to 50 million. The city has no way of paying for those. We expect that development as it comes will pay for that. But we reserve those right-of-ways, and we are ready, when the development comes in, to provide in their development agreements or our conversation with them, that they need to reserve right-of-way and participate, or build, or pay. And so that's the same thing here. It is not set, and that is for future conversation. So to conclude, roundabouts should be considered anytime intersection requires enhanced control since they provide safety and operational benefits compared to other types. So they should be compared equally. And the location, type of user, and operation should be looked at carefully when designing a roundabout so that we make sure they're a good fit and they will work. And lastly, when properly designed, these elements work together to provide an intersection which operates efficiently and safely. And then I'll finish with this. ADOT's project near the airport also includes a roundabout. That will be built at Perkins by the golf course. And so the current design, we would add two more roundabouts on 89. And so you would have this, you'd have a series of roundabouts slowing and allowing safe movements in and out. But this is kind of, that project is kind of the culmination of 89, and we'll basically improve it all the way from the south all the way to Chino, except for the Dells, which we're taking suggestions on how to make that work into the future. And with that, that's all I had. If any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I'd just like to comment, Ian, thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. I think this could be, as we were talking with Cindy who was here, and Jean had mentioned, this could be absolutely beautiful entrance to Prescott and exit to Prescott. And I know that there are folks out there that would be willing to talk about what we could put in the center of that roundabout to welcome and thank people for coming. So a nice, nice P3, private-public partnership we could do. Thank you.
I thought you said you had a slide on cost. Did I miss that?
I don't have a slide on cost comparisons. I was just making some general, I gave, I think I gave the cost on the other one.
I think I recall a little more to construct it, but not to maintain it.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Is pretty much correct.
It all revolves around a right-of-way for roundabouts. It's really right-of-way driven.
And the other thing, you know, both in film and in your discussion, you talk about proper design. And I guess what I wonder is, do we just automatically assume the worst? To give an example, I was in, came back from Phoenix yesterday, and I had a truck pass me, and I thought that trailer would never end. It was a 53 footer instead of a 40 footer. So I mean, there's probably going to be a lot of changes in transportation modes in the future and the way we haul stuff, I guess probably for cost reduction. So I assume we're going to try and use probably the worst-case scenario and build for that because obviously vehicles are going to get longer and possibly wider and heavier. So I think we're going to have to kind of keep that in mind.
Yeah. Traditionally, what we do is, we do have a design vehicle. And like I said, what we've been doing is increasing that size. So we'll take a large tractor trailer. And all the new designs that we've been doing or ADOT's been doing is intended to keep those trucks in lane. They do not take both lanes. And that's why a lot of times on the enter, on the entering, you'll see an area of wide hashing between the two lanes. It widens out maybe four feet. And you can kind of tell which ones are designed to keep them in lane by looking at that. But then again, you know, out in Chino, you're going to get someone pulling a mobile home that might be 100 feet long. And so at one time or another, you're going to come in where they're going to take both lanes and use the truck apron because those are the exceptions. But we do, we adapt and we change.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Not ask a question, I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to put my neck on the line here. I think that it would be totally appropriate to, if we want to really make that roundabout something special, would be to take the early settlers from Honor Island and put the early settlers out on the roundabout next to Fippen. So that's kind of the first shot across the bow, and I would imagine it's open for public discussion, but I think that that would be an excellent situation. It would be right there with Fippen where the early settlers should be. And so I'm sticking my neck on the line on this deal.
Go ahead.
Ian, I know you've told me before, but what is the width of the roundabout now that will be located next to the Fippen, the design?
Yeah, that one has an outer diameter of somewhere around 200 feet. So.
So the width of the island, what?
Yeah, the width of the island would be about 150, yeah, 150, 155.
So then I've heard that's really good.
It's in the low 2s, 200 to 220 on the outer lanes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we are, this design will have water, electrical stubbed. We always do that on our roundabouts. And then the design includes areas of elevation, but everything will be set so that whatever comes out of it, we'll be able to accommodate, any kind of art or monument or anything like that.
Okay. Nice.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Next item.
I see council discussion of the city's liquor license fees.
I think I'll go ahead and start this off. I asked the city clerk to give me a little history on where we stand today on liquor license fees. And it looks like they were first implemented in 1933, right after, in the prohibition. And they were again revised in 1965, December 23, 65. Ordinance established Chapter Four, titled Four, Chapter Seven of the City Code related to licensing of regulations of persons dealing alcoholic beverages, establishing an application fee, and establishing annual permit taxes. The ordinance was adopted in order to classify licenses to conform to state law and revise and adopt the fees. On February 23, 1981, the ordinance amended the city code to include the approval and establishment of a fee, filing fee for special event liquor licenses. October 26, 95, the ordinance then made administrative changes to the code to include the process for the issue, permit issuance, term renewal, and payment of fees. In July of 2003, the ordinance increased the application fee and the permit fees. It also established the annual adjustment of fees equivalent to the increase in the Consumer Price Index. And then in FY16, the revenue from the liquor license permit fees was moved from the general fund to the transient lodging bed tax fund due to state law requiring these fees be used exclusively by the state for the promotion of tourism. I believe right now, the next fee payment is not due until sometime January 17. Is that correct?
January 1st.
That's great. Okay. And I've also been asked by the TAC, Tourism Advisory Committee, and one other group to pull this from the voting agenda today for more review by those groups and possibly by city staff. I think we need to move forward on this and bring this to vote today. What I'd like to do now is just open it up for any kind of questions from the council. Looking at the time, I guess I could take some public comment today, but I'll also open it up for a public comment when we get to the voting session later on. So is there any comments from the council right now on this or questions?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
It's not necessarily questions, but I guess the first thing that I'd like to point out, this is a new installed amount to the tourism budget. They haven't lived on this forever. It just started. It was intended to be in the general fund. In 2016, it was moved over, correct?
Yes, Councilman, you're right. It was moved over in 2016. That was because council decided to move the tourism department out of the general fund, which had a budget of approximately $150,000 into the bed tax. At that time, this $78,000 was also moved as a revenue because of the state law.
Okay. And then another thing I'd like to point out, during the budget meetings, I think they quoted me here, I asked to be removed, but then I got resistance and they said, but my question to Mr. McConnell was, or somebody, that later on, if we had this removed, could the department survive? The answer was generally yes, it could. I guess my point being is this was intended for public safety in the general fund. We moved it over to the general, from the general fund to the tourism budget. And it was to help offset what was perceived as a burden, some, a burden to the public safety for liquor-serving establishments. Now, I think it's just a cash cow. We charge it because we can. It didn't go to the public. And I believe that it is an arbitrary fee on an industry that otherwise spends more money cumulatively in advertising and promoting itself than this fee itself. So I am not against having a one-time application fee, whatever that number is, whether it be special events or a permanent establishment. This reoccurring revenue stream is just, because we can't live without it, quote unquote. Government never shrinks. We just keep bringing it in and bringing it in. We can't trim the fat per se. So I'm for the annual reoccurring fee removal, but the one-time I'm in support of.
Go ahead.
Just one clarification, Mayor. The, this liquor tax or fee, it's really a tax, in reality, has been dedicated to tourism for, since the early 2000s?
I believe it was around 2006.
Okay, so about 10 years. Just so, just for clarification purposes, factually, the fund issue, creating a separate tourism fund is sort of separate, but the law has required the city to dedicate the, this liquor tax, because it's a discriminatory tax, to tourism promotion and in our, in our case, recreation, for about 10 years now. So without taking a position, just, it's been in the budget for about 10 years.
Okay, before we go to a couple other folks here that have questions, how many people out there in the audience are currently paying a license fee? One, two, three, four. Okay, just curious, because I noticed we have 159 people that have active licenses and we only have four out here in the audience. Maybe there'll be more at the voting session. Councilman Wilcox?
Yeah, in response to Greg's comment, I've noticed that our general fund is getting squeezed more and more, and that forces us to look for other sources of funding. And we've been looking at the bed tax for a lot of other uses, one of which is to support public safety, support for events and tourism-related activities. So I think it's important that we continue this source of revenue, and it does actually help relieve the general fund pressure.
Only on one segment of our business folks, just because we can.
Those who sell liquor in some form.
Councilman O'Rourke.
Yeah, I know I sound like a broken record on this, and I apologize, but I think it's really important that we look at what is done with that money. We have a one to, we have a three to one direct benefit to our. We have a one to, one, we have a three, three to one direct benefit to our tourism and to our economy because of this money that goes into tourism. Indirect, seven to one. So, I think it's really important for our economy, tourism is a big part of what happens here in Prescott, and I, I've had the opportunity and the joy to serve on the Tourism Act, the Tourism Advisory Committee, as far as being the council representative. I don't have a vote, but I sit there and I watch and I listen to all that goes on, and I can tell you, $70,000 will definitely put a dent in what we're able to do for tourism if that does go away. And so, I think, again, we're talking about return on investment for this amount of money, and I believe the folks that, that put forth this $70,000, be it a bar, a restaurant, whether it's a, an event that happens, they benefit from tourists coming to our community. And so, I think it's just, it's, it's again, a place of where we all, it's kind of a paying it forward. So, I highly will absolutely support that, that we maintain this license tax.
Councilwoman Chiswick?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm disappointed. I think that, you know, at the last session, I gave a perfect opening to anybody who could come up and find a happy medium, to let's figure out how we can support those entities that we've been supporting, and yet, work with you so that it's to your benefit also. And, and nobody has come up and said, gee, you know, we want to work with you, let's figure out how. You know, I got to be honest with you, if, if, if I was a bar owner in a, in a little strip center off of Miller Valley Road, yeah, I would feel put upon, but not a bar owner in downtown Prescott. You know, I love those guys, but the truth of the matter is, is that they are getting far more benefit from that situation than the poor little guy on Miller Valley. So, you know, I mean, we've got to, we've got to sit back and figure out how this thing can work, because, you know, just because we say, shazam, all of a sudden, we're moving this money, or we're, we're getting rid of this money, that the needs don't continue on. So, I understand, Greg, I understand totally where you're coming from, and I understand where Billy's coming from, and so, my disappointment is, is that we haven't gotten a, a, a middle point that we can benefit everybody.
I moved mine from total elimination to at least the one time.
Thank you, but that one time goes towards...
Staff.
Administering that situation. And so, I agree with you, but I don't agree with you, so that's where I'm at.
But it's just not the downtown that benefits from tourism.
No, but by far. But by far.
Because the, realtors get, people deciding to move here, realtors sell, why don't we charge the realtors?
But that's somewhat indirect, and I, you know, but I don't see any of those people who are really getting gored, if you want to say that, here. I see the folks that, you know, we all know and love, and, you know, they're benefiting substantially from this situation. Now, they may say, well, gee, you know, we provide a lot of, of benefit to the downtown.
And they do.
And they do. But again, I say, if your bar was in Willhoyt, would everybody be in Willhoyt, or would they still be in downtown Prescott? And, and I think that, that, yeah, it'd be in downtown Prescott. So, we're all working together on this thing. It's not like we're working against the guys who are helping us out downtown here. But, you know, we've got to find a way to make this happen for everybody, I think.
Councilman Blair?
I'm not going to give a whole lot of lip service to it, but Mark, what, how much is our bed tax up this year over last year?
I'm sorry, I don't have the exact numbers with me, but it is up.
$20,000, $30,000?
I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers.
Point is, is when it's up, we spend more. Point is, when it's down, we spend less. If this 70 went down, and we'd be spending less, and, but the overall value of what we're spending out there in tourism is going up, so it wouldn't be a big factor as far as losing the 70. And I'm appalled that this is not a tax that was voted on by the public to strap a certain group of people in this community, and I have a problem with that. Now, if you go out and you ask the people in this community if we want to tax ourself based upon a bed tax, and the community at large votes on it, and it passes overwhelmingly, that's a different story. So, they're two separate things in my mind, and I will be a no vote on that.
Mark, could we have the differential between last year and this year for the time they vote later?
Sure, we can have that for this afternoon.
I think it's important. I think we sit here and talk about how important this 70,000 is, but over the last four or five years, we haven't had that 70,000 because the bed tax has been down. So, my point is, we have adjusted. Every single year, when the committee looks at the amount of money that's available, they've adjusted it to the different beneficiaries out there, and it happens every single year, and I don't see a problem with us adjusting it to this 70,000.
And again, not, not a position, but just for information, the 70,000 has always gone to offset the cost of the tourism department. Prior to 2016, it was in the general fund, and that's where the revenues were. It only moved to the bed tax fund because council wanted to move all the tourism expenses out of the general fund to the bed tax fund, just to clarify.
So, right now, the bed tax fund is kind of like an enterprise fund, it's...
It's a, it's considered a special revenue fund. It has a revenue that has a specific purpose.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
I'm sorry, that was an old one.
Councilwoman Orr?
Well, the other part I would like to bring up is the competition that we have in between, we compete with, for tourists, between Wickenburg, Sedona, Flagstaff, and I will tell, Flagstaff, I believe at our last meeting, Don, you said they have four times the staff that we have, and, and, but yet, this, these are our competitors. So, certainly, we need to do everything that we can to get more money into bringing tourists into our community. I know everybody does advertising, and I'm sure we all benefit from that advertising from the bars, but at the same time, they benefit from what goes on in our city that we advertise for tourists, whether it's, where it's groups that come in, you know, they come in on a bus or whatever, and, funny, I'm, I'm with you, Steve. I, I actually spoke to several people and said, well, would you be willing, can we sit down, can we talk about, maybe this is, maybe the structure isn't quite right, can we refine it a little bit? So, I honestly believe that, I bet $62, Dana, that we charge special events, maybe that should go up. Maybe something can come down. So, maybe we could look at this whole structure of the system, but in the meantime, I think I will vote that we hold on to what we have until we come up with something that's better.
Councilwoman Chiswick?
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, Mark, if in fact, this thing was, the, the fee was voted out today, would we, as of today, or as of the next business day, write a check to all of the people who have contributed to that fee for the remainder of whatever period of time that fee represented?
I'd defer to legal, but the fee was due January 1, and the fee was in place January 1. If you cancel the fee now, it would just be for the next renewal date.
I agree.
Okay.
I do have the, the bed tax information on the budget up there to answer Councilwoman Blair's earlier question. As you can see, we, we, we estimate a budget bed tax at 820 in '17, which is 20 over our estimated ending for '16, and a 140 over our budget for '16.
$140,000 over. And see, and, and listen to Billy, and just because Flagstaff's got four more people than we do, that doesn't mean anything to me. That means maybe our people work harder, so...
Well, I'm sure they do.
And I'm not impressed with that. Prescott's a different cow than Flagstaff.
And just to bring up the other point that I referred to earlier, you can see from '15, the movement of the bed tax department into the, into the fund at the same time that the, the liquor license went in there, we had a significant increase in the, in the bed tax cost.
Mayor Protem?
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. I agree with the city attorney that it's a discriminatory tax, and that in itself pesters me some. I don't like discriminatory taxes, but of course, there's a lot of taxes I don't like. I think a lot of our taxes are discriminatory. Very similar to Chiswick, I'm very disappointed as a, as a group, that over the last, only he hasn't been here that long, 12, 14 years, we haven't been able to come up with a sustainable funding source for police and fire. We've been nickeling diamond this thing for a long time. I, I, I think it's time to have that discussion, to get off the dime, as to what we're going to do to fund police and fire, and just stop screwing around with this damn thing, and using tourism as, as an excuse, or anybody else. Police and fire don't have a dedicated revenue stream, and because tourism is here, I refuse to believe that tourism does not also have an impact on police and fire. I also believe that, that everybody in the community has an impact on police and fire, and at some point, we need to talk about having a public safety mechanism to pay for what this community demands. So, I'm just leaving it there. I don't like discriminatory taxes at all, but we haven't come up with a resolution for some sort of a flat tax to discuss, how do we take care of police and fire in the city of Prescott to where we're not in this dog and pony show every year, so...
Any other comments, questions from the council? Okay, I'll make a couple very quickly, and, you know, I think I agree with Councilwoman Orr, looking at some of the surrounding towns, they, they do have much larger budgets for tourism, and it's reflected in the number of tourists that they have coming into their area and spending money. Because I talked to the other mayor's, and let me tell you what, they consider tourism to be the lifeblood of their, their communities, and they're very happy to, to spend the money to get additional people coming in to visit their towns. I think the money that we've been spending for the last 10 years, that we have received in liquor fees, has been used to drive the tourism industry, and as a result, has benefited those in the liquor industry. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's part of the payment of, of the liquor industry to help support trying to get tourism to come to Prescott. Now, would I prefer that we had a fee, just like the Mayor Protem talked about, to support police and fire, public safety, you bet. I think we do need to come up with a dedicated source, and I think there's consensus on the, the council here, to have the city managers start to work with the staff and try and come up with some ideas on, on how we might be able to do that. Now, if we do get a flat fee going in the future, then I think I'd be more willing to eliminate the, the license fee that we're currently charging for, for the liquor industry. Okay, at this point, I'll go to the, to the public for about 20 minutes. Limit your discussions to five minutes, please, and...
Shocker.
I got it.
I got one more person here that wants to talk. I'll get you up here in just a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Limit your questions to five minutes, please, and then in 20 minutes, we'll go ahead and shut this off, because I'm sure I'm going to get much more discussion when we get into the voting session. Councilman Blair?
I would ask staffer if somebody knows, I'd like to know what the communities around us, including Flagstaff, Sedona, and other places, what their bed tax percentage is. Is it three, is it four, is it five? Certainly, there's more money out there being spent in some of these communities because their tax is higher than what we have, and that's another place that we may very well want to look.
Yeah, he might. Go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, the, in Sedona, the bed tax is 3.5%. In Flagstaff, they don't have a bed tax, they have a BBB tax.
What is the percent on that?
That's 5%.
Okay. There you have it.
That probably helps some way, yeah. Okay, come on up.
Come on down.
I won't rehash all the stuff I said last time in my two and a half minutes that I had, but Mayor, to your point, the fact there's only a handful of us here representing the liquor license industry, I can't speak for everybody else, but I can guarantee you, there's not a liquor license holder in this town that feels that tax is fair, that we're the only ones paying it, whether they're here or not. Once again, I said last time, if you want to charge everybody that price, I wouldn't be standing here. But why we're singled out, I don't know. And to your point, Steve, about the little bars or restaurants that aren't downtown, they chose to be where they're at for whatever reason. Maybe they didn't want to pay the rents that are downtown that we're paying, they're getting off, you know, with lower rents. For whatever reason, they're there because that's where they want to be. So, we chose to be downtown. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. I love being downtown. I love being at the Palace and having a business on, in downtown. I really feel a part of this community. And I just don't understand why the liquor licenses are the ones that are always singled out for lots of things. And that's all we're asking, is a fair playing field, you know? Why, why can't everybody participate in this tax, is what, is what it is, as a tax? It just doesn't, you know, we just, that's what we don't understand, why, why us? And, you know, and Greg said earlier, collectively, as an industry hospitality, we probably do spend more than any other industry to get people, to our businesses, of course, but also to Prescott. You know, Ghost Adventures, Ghost Adventures, two Saturdays ago, did a whole segment on the Palace and the Birdcage Band House. How many millions of people saw that? You know, just because where we are and what we did and whatever. So, that's a benefit to everybody, too. And, and then the revenue and all the people we employ, I think that gets forgotten, too. We have thousands and thousands of employees between us that, that a lot of businesses don't have, and a lot of, I'm not going to complain about taxes and stuff, because it's just the way it is. You got payroll taxes, you got payroll taxes. But I'm just saying, there's so many more things that we have with our businesses to contend with, that that's one, probably the main reason we feel that this liquor license tax isn't just for just us. Once again, if everybody paid a, you know, at least retail, I can see a doctor's office maybe not paying, but retail store, like pet supplies, jewelry, you know, places like that, you know, then we would, we would understand that. But why, why we're singled out? We just, we, and I'm speaking for all of us, because no one else is here to speak. Well, Tommy might get up. But, you know, that's, that's our whole point. Why, why us? We believe in tourism, believe me, and we do our share to get people to this town. It's a great town, but without the hospitality, as cool a town as this is, it wouldn't be quite as cool, because people like to go eat and drink and socialize, and it's just a part of a community that benefits everybody in the community, not, not just the bars and restaurants. So, thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, Mayor and Council, I'm Brad Christensen, and I'm in the hotel business here in town. I guess personally, I, I'm sympathetic to the bars and this tax. I, I kind of get what they're saying, but I, I also believe in our tourism program, and I see evidence of its, of its success every day. And for that reason, I'd like to work with them and the city on ways that we may be able to cover that fee, and then also maybe even increase the amount of money that we have available for tourism. I mean, right now, we're, I think we're roughly 40% of the economy, tourism is, and yet, we have all kinds of idle capacity, what I'll call idle capacity, from Sunday through Thursday. So, we have all kinds of room to grow. And I think, when you're talking about economic development, I think you got to be talking about tourism. I think it's, it's one leg of a three-legged stool, at least, and I think we have all kinds of opportunity to increase tax collection that would be available for police and fire. So, I'd, I'd like to begin a conversation today with the bars and the restaurant community and the city leadership on ways that we could perhaps enhance the marketing and tourism effort here in Prescott. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, could I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Mark, is there, are we accumulating cash in the tourism fund?
Yeah, we talk about it every year that we go through the budget process, and you can see on the bottom of this, on the bottom of the screen here, we do accumulate. At the beginning of this year, we had 313,000 that rolled forward, and that's a result of mounts being budgeted and, and shows or projects just not happening, or receipts being above projected revenues.
Okay, and how much of that do we, do we need, let's say, for a fail-safe?
Well, since this is a special revenue fund with a specific purpose, council policy really allows council to consider the, the level during the budget process. It wouldn't have to be at 20%, which is where your policy is for the general fund. You know, if you did 10% on a $800,000 budget, you know, had 80,000, 100,000 in the fund balance, since we do have operating functions budgeted here, that would be sufficient.
And do you foresee accumulating more cash as years go on?
Well, it all depends on the actual, actual performance to the budgeted performance. Again, we budget with the information we have. If those things happen that we budgeted and the receipts come in where we are, we wouldn't have that receipt. We do budget this fund right now at a zero in case items come up one-time type purchases, whether it's a playground contribution or whatever, we budget this appropriated fund balance amount, which is 297,009, or 722 in fiscal '17.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, I appreciate your letting me ask that question.
Yeah. Well, again, I'd like to go ahead and just respond that, you know, I think we need to have a little bit of a reserve, because I mean, Councilman Blair just talked about some, some years we have, you know, the economy turns down. If we have that reserve, it's going to be used to try and get tourists to come in here and, and help continue some level of, of economic development and support of the, the businesses we have here. So personally, I think if we have a slight reserve increase every year, that's not bad. Obviously, it gives us at some point, you know, an opportunity to, to cut fees if we need to, if we start getting too much. But I, I think right now, I'd like to continue to, to maintain a reserve. Next, please.
Mayor, Council, White Hat Gene. I'd like to welcome our new city manager. Nice to have you here and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Starting right now.
Mr. White Hat, could you identify yourself, please?
Pardon me?
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Tommy Meredith, Jersey LA Salon, I'm sorry. We've all talked about this, and what it comes down to is, is what Greg and said, basically, we have the money, we don't want to let it go. As simple as that. City has no right to have the money. There's no reason to have the money. It was established for years ago and carried over, and it's discriminatory towards the liquor industry, to say the least. It's even discriminatory between the actual licensees. These different licenses, it goes from 1 through 19, the different licenses in Prescott, Prescott. $530, $178, $354, $575, $662, which is us, $100, and down to $50 for different variations of classifications within the liquor licensing process. So it's even discriminatory within the $662 or the fee in itself. The other thing that's not been mentioned, and I've talked to most everybody here, as they've heard this, but, you know, we have a letter here, it's in my file, that was between our city manager and our representatives at that time with Pi. And we were basically promised, I don't know how else you can say it, I guess nothing's for sure, but if we got the business license approved, this was three or four years ago, it's dated here and shows that there was correspondence, that they would do a, with this liquor license fee. If we could get the license, of course, it had to be voted on. So they needed everybody's participation in getting the liquor, I mean, the business license approved, to be voted on. Well, we agreed with that. And then the next thing we know, it got set, went by the wayside, and then we have another, we had another initiative to try to establish a business license, which I was for. I, I talked to a lot of people, and a lot of people asked about things like this. And I said why I thought it was good, used our latest problem, can't think, anyway, that we just solved, because we know who's coming into our town through the business license process. So now we're not getting any consideration for what was said before, and of course, it wasn't approved. We worked at trying to get the license, business license, so that we wouldn't be taxed with this indiscriminate $662. And the thing that really kind of irritates me, and most of the people I'm, you know, everybody on the tourism committee are the ones you're hearing from. And then some of my good, good, good friends are on the tourism committee. But the thing that gripes me is, I get this, Tommy, it's tourism. It's, don't you understand, it's tourism? Well, I know what tourism is, and I think the liquor industry, and I know myself personally, have done a hell of a lot for tourism. I'm for it. You know, I could tell you a list as long of things that maybe we should do to help tourism. But that really disturbs me, because we do a lot of things. I mean, there isn't a, if you want to really get hypothetical in a way, there isn't pamphlet, a book, a message, or anything that, that doesn't refer to Whiskey Row, Downtown Courthouse, for example. We bring tourists in here. And tourism, and bars are different than restaurants. Restaurants sell rooms, there's only so many rooms in town. Every bar in town sells Jack and Coke, okay, really good Jack, but anyway, Coke does that sometimes. But, you know, how would you like to have a business if you were just singled out? Well, I've seen that, we're out of money here, we, we need to get some money in this. Probably we'll go out and get, you know, dry cleaning establishments, and we'll start charging them $200 just to bring them, that's just what it amounts to. Now, there are ways of working this out. I'm, you know, I've got an idea or two, but it comes back to whether it's a principle thing or a necessary substantial, substantiated reasoning. There is no reasoning for the city to do this to us. That's what it amounts to. They have it, they don't want to turn it loose. Simple as that.
Thirty seconds left.
Okay. That's what it comes down to. So basically, we're all for the tourism. If we can get together, there's some ways of working this out, I think, where it doesn't hurt everybody, one industry like, that we're having done now, but that would take a postponement of the vote later on today if we did that. But nobody, like Steve and Greg both said, there's been no attempt to get together. And I'd rather get together than have to carry the total burden myself. And you could reduce, just real quick, Mayor, for example, there's, I've got a list in here of all the allocations for the activities, bicycle races, all those events. If they, if you get $30,000 from the city for your event, or $20,000, and everybody reduced theirs 10%, so if a guy gets $2,000 from the city every year to do his thing, he's only going to get $1,800, and it's not going to hurt him that much. If everybody went down 10%, you could pay the $70,000 and, and help make it up, and there's other ways. But thank you for your time, and we're going to discuss this next 3 o'clock, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome, city manager.
Thank you, Tommy, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Tommy, and I agree, you, you help us in the tourism industry with the, with the courthouse lighting, and we appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay.
I got a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Even though if we do vote on this thing, it doesn't preclude us from coming back and putting our heads together to do something. I mean, I personally believe that if the city manager or city attorney would use some creativity, that we could use 78,000, those dollars, and reduce the other ones by hiring a police officer under the eyes of having to provide more security downtown for different events, and it could come out of the bed tax. You know, there's things that we can do that we keep ignoring. In one place, we keep ignoring totally, I mean, tourism's great, but this town's only great because of our public safety. And at some point in time, we are going to have to address that. And whether we want to go back, this next coming go-around for a vote and ask that there be a bed, booze, and bar tax for 5% and solve this dilemma for a long time, and if the public votes it in, then we have a different mindset, and the public votes it out, then we go back to what we're doing now and complain about it every year.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank Brad and, sorry, Tommy, and Dave for coming forward. And I would, I would personally like to see us again, I'll just say it one more time, hold on to what we have, and let's come up with a better plan. And I think Brad has offered to put his effort toward that, and I think that would be a good thing for our city to do.
I have a tendency to agree with that, because, you know, we're not, we're not going to have to collect again until January. That gives us two months, and I know with our new city manager and staff, they're going to come up with some great ideas.
No, you're right, Mr. Mayor. Just to dovetail that to Councilman Blair's comment, however you decide this issue today shouldn't be the end of the dialogue, it should really be the beginning of the dialogue, because there's a lot of validity to what they're saying. It is discriminatory, but it's money that we've grown accustomed to having, and if we're going to try to find the largest solution, they need to be at the table.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming. Remember, we're going to start again here in about 15 minutes with the voting session. We'll see you then. Thank you for coming.
Hoorah. Perfect.